Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There we go. Welcome to this Christmas edition of the Rowan County Board of Commissioners. Today is December 16th, 2019, and as we always say, it is a privilege and an honor to have you here with us tonight. We hope that your time with us this evening is time well spent. We hope you enjoy your time here, and thank you for being part of local government. So it's been the tradition of this board for a long time, and boards all across the nation, that we begin with a couple of things. We're going to have a pledge, but then we're also going to have something called a solemnizing prayer. Now, don't feel left out, but this is not for you. This is for us. We take what we do very seriously, and we actually actively seek wisdom to do what is best for every member of our community. And so we'll have our chaplain come forward and offer up a solemnizing prayer. And commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, we thank you as we come to the end of 2019, and thank for the county commissioners and the work they've done, Lord, and all the time they've spent trying to make us a better county, Lord. Pray your blessings upon them, Lord, and pray you continue to give them the wisdom they need, and thank for their dedication and the love they have for this county, Lord. I'm glad to be a part of this county, Lord, and thank for what's taking place. Pray you guide and direct this meeting tonight, and give them wisdom they need, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. My pledge to leave is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. As always, we appreciate your time. We'd just like to say again to the group, welcome. Merry Christmas to all of you, and we certainly, as a community, have a lot to be thankful for. And we're going to talk about some of those things tonight, but we are sure blessed to be in such an engaged, wonderful community that has been blessed with natural resources and folks who are passionate about this community. And so I'm thankful to be here, thankful to be a part of that, and thankful for these commissioners and those that are on staff that lead us and our attorney. We appreciate him as well, and commissioners, Merry Christmas to you.
Same to you.
Thank you all.
Happy holidays.
Yep. All right, so I've got one agenda adjustment, and that would be Item J under consent. We're going to pull that. We've got an item to adjust on that. Going to pull Item J. Outside of that, are there any other additions or deletions? All right, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda's amended?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then, let's see. Then we have the minutes have been provided for. We have a motion to approve the minutes of December 2nd.
So moved.
We have a motion, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then let's consider the approval of consent agenda, motion to approve consent.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have public comment period. Has anyone signed up for public comment?
I think that was for your public.
Yeah, so we've got public comment period. We do have a public hearing tonight, so a lot of you have signed up on public comment. So those are kind of two separate things. So we're going to have a public hearing on the bond issue, so if you've signed up on this and want to speak about the bond, then you're welcome to do that during our comment period then, during the public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak outside of that, Connie, then feel free to come up. And so state your name for the record.
Connie Byrne, and I live in Kannapolis, down by Village Park. I've been coming to these meetings for, what, about six years, I think? And I've made it to everyone that I possibly could. And last week, when my ass wound up in the hospital for Afib, and I didn't know what was going on, I was so upset that I might miss the meeting tonight. And the last time I was here, the elevator was out of order. That was one of the things that sent me to the doctor's office. Love and beyond, I've gotten to know, over the last six years, I have gotten to know each and every one of you in a way I never would have thought possible. We don't always agree, but I have come to know and love each and every one of you, and to know that you are dedicated to this community, and that you will always put the interests of this community above your own personal interests. And so I am very grateful. And those of you out here, start coming to the meetings. You need to know what's going on. Thanks.
Thank you, Connie. Appreciate it. Hope you're feeling better. Is there anyone else who has signed up that would like to speak? All right, then we'll move ahead to our next item, and that's, I'm suspecting why many of you here, and it's the public hearing for the bond order and resolution for the adoption of the general obligation bonds. So before we get started, we're going to restate what the rules are. We adopted these rules for this particular hearing, and they're pretty simple. During the public hearing, the length of comment for each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board comments. The board and comments shall be restricted to the subject of the hearing as advertised. And so we will begin the public hearing, and the first one that has signed up to speak during public hearing is Dr. Carol Spalding. Welcome.
Thank you. Is this where I'm supposed to stand? I did sign up on the wrong sheet of paper. I'm sorry. Okay. I'm Carol Spalding. I'm president of Rowan Cabarrus Community College, and we're very thrilled to be here tonight. It's an important night for us, actually, for all of us, because we've been having meetings with the Rowan Educational Collaborative that have resulted in our being here today, have resulted in us really taking seriously that we want to be a college-going community, an educated community. And we know we need more options than the ones that we currently have. We need more capacity to serve this population, and so we're really happy to be here tonight. So for nearly 60 years, Rowan Cabarrus Community College has been committed to anticipate educational needs, to help Rowan County be competitive and be relevant. And so last year, the college was the fastest-growing community college in the state, even when employment was low, and enrollment was up 6 percent. So that's quite amazing. But the growth has been in transfer education, and we really need to do more with the trades and expand opportunities for workforce careers. So Rowan County's at a turning point. Very soon, the growth from the completion of I-85 is going to, you know, bring us into the current time, and now is the time to prepare the workforce to meet these new opportunities that lie ahead. The college is dedicated to providing first-rate instruction and opportunities to lead to lucrative, sustainable jobs in growing fields. The proposed bond referendum will support expansion of the college's north campus to include what we're calling a tech, the Technology Education Complex. So its programs, such as welding, machining, automotive technologies, and a decontamination facility for our very important fire and emergency services training program, and a facility to support the dual enrollment and early college high school that currently are successful on our campus. In fact, the college's Student Government Association recently voted to give the campaign for this project $45,000 contribution. And they know that they won't be the ones enjoying these new facilities. It will be people who come after them, and we're very, very proud of that. They also are giving a minimum of 200 volunteer hours. So you'll see them all over the place, not just here tonight, but all over the place talking about how Rowan Cabarrus Community College is going to help this community grow. So during tonight's public hearing, you'll hear several other people have very short snippets about what kind of difference we can make in the community. And at this time, I'd like to recognize our board chair and our bond campaign co-chairs, if they would stand for just a minute. Board Chair, Board of Trustees Chair, Chip Short, Jean Dixon, and Brad Boss, would you please stand? They're our chairs. And we're grateful to our boards for both of, both boards have endorsed this bond issue with 100 percent. We're also very happy that the school system, all seven of the elected school board members have signed on and endorsed this project as well, and we're very happy to have tonight the vice chair of that group, Ms. Cox, who's with us. So we're grateful, I just want to tell you that we're grateful for all your support, for your encouragement, for your involvement in all this project, and we're here tonight to try and tell our story, mostly to Josh, because I think a lot of you had tours and done all those kinds of things, and so if you'll give us just a few minutes of your time, we'd love to be able to tell you a little bit more about what we've got in mind. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Spalding. Carolyn, are you running the clock? Okay. No offense, Chip.
(laughter)
We know you're an attorney, and you charge by the minute. We're going to limit you to three.
Thank you for that. And Merry Christmas, Mr. Chair and commissioners. You are right, we have a lot to be proud of in Rowan County. I'm proud to be here tonight as a resident of the county and as chair of the Rowan Cabarrus Community College Board of Trustees. My name is Chip Short. And in order to meet today's workforce and economic development needs, the college needs upgraded and expanded facilities in order to serve the workforce of today and to prepare the workforce of tomorrow. The county needs a stronger pathway to opportunity, and the Rowan Education Collaborative is committed to increasing the pipeline for career and technical education. Right now, we have a capacity problem, and we need to increase this capacity for the community college to serve more students for jobs of the future. For example, this bond will help the college increase its number of student welding stations from 29 to nearly 70. These additional 40 students will bring an additional $1 million in salaries to the county every single year. Providing a pathway to prosperity for our local high school students will help them be more likely to stay here, to live here, to work here, and to thrive in Rowan County. Employers will be drawn to Rowan County as a result of the Technology Education Complex because it will provide the necessary pipeline of workers that will be needed for our county's future. The Technology Education Complex would address critical needs for sustainable, high-technology, high-wage, and high-demand jobs in our county by providing industry-recognized certifications and hands-on skills for emerging incumbent and transitioning students. So thank you for your belief in the mission of the community college and for voting to move the bond referendum forward tonight so that the citizens of the county can vote on this in March. Thank you.
Thank you, Chip. Chief Bob Parnell.
Good evening. I'm Robert Parnell, chief of the City of Salisbury Fire Department, and I want you to know, I think you know, that I believe that the fire training programs at Rowan Cabarrus Community College are one of the best in the nation, certainly in the state. And over the past 50 years, the college has prepared, I think this is an amazing number, over 67,000 firefighters have gone through the program to become firefighters or to serve their community in a volunteer way here in Rowan County at the Rowan Cabarrus Community College. They contribute daily, if not hourly, to the safety and well-being of our citizens. As a graduate myself of Rowan Cabarrus Community College Fire Science Program, who has spent my entire career in the fire protection industry, I know the program has a reputation nationwide for being on the cutting edge of fire training. With the help of the bond, with the help of this bond, the college will be able to continue its forward-thinking approach and uphold the history as a leader in fire and emergency services training. One thing that I think is important for me to say is, the firefighter in the firefighting industry is subject to having a cancer 10 or 15 percent greater than a general population, anyone else in the general population. That, of course, is because firefighters enter into contaminated environments. We enter into smoke, we enter into heat, or a combination of both, or we enter into other hazardous materials, and with all the best protective levels that we can get, we still somehow come up a little bit higher in our rates of cancer and our cancer deaths than the general population. The college is poised to develop the first-of-its-kind decontamination facility to address firefighter safety. These folks who put their lives on the line every day for us, a major concern, of course, is their exposure to carcinogens and contaminants in the line of duty. Without proper decontamination processes, not only do they put themselves in danger of skin cancers or other cancers and other illnesses, they also may expose their family members because they take the carcinogens home with them, with their clothing or their skin. We were just talking, it's not unusual for a firefighter to fight a fire today, shower tonight, and wake up in the morning and still smell fire on their skin. The proposed decontamination facility at Rowan Cabarrus Community College would be one of the first in the nation dedicated to training firefighters on proper gear removal, proper decontamination, and proper ways to eliminate the dangers of their services. This is groundbreaking and life-saving. We owe it to our firefighters and our community beyond. The firefighting community is behind this bond referendum, and we appreciate the investment that the county and the college are making to keep our firefighters safe and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Grace Peters.
Hello. My name is Grace Peters. I live in China Grove, so it is Rowan County. I am a second-year welding student, pursuing an associate's degree. I chose to enter the welding program because I work well with my hands, and I love the idea of my future job not being an office job or a typical desk job, since a desk job is not for me. I had never welded before entering Rowan Cabarrus and honestly didn't know the first thing about it, but now I know how to work all of the machines and weld in many different forms. I chose Rowan Cabarrus because not only is it close to home, but it offers so many opportunities for success. As a woman in a male-dominated field, I thought I would have a hard time feeling like a part of the team, but I'm so happy to say that that is not the case whatsoever. The professionalism displayed by the faculty is impressive. Even though the welding lab we have is not as advanced as it could be, it is extremely hot, as you can imagine, and the air ventilation is not the greatest. However, our instructors work incredibly well with what we have. If we had more welding booths, we could have bigger class sizes and many more new students, possibly females. I plan to graduate within the next year and a half. After I graduate, I hope to get a well-paying job in a fabrication shop here in the area. The average pay for a professional welder is nearly $50,000 per year. I would also like to have my own welding shop/business eventually, and I went from not knowing what I wanted to do at the age of 18 to having a complete map of my life planned out at age 21. Rowan Cabarrus played a big part in helping me figure out exactly what I wanted to do. Expanding the career and technology program like welding at the college will do the same for others and open doorways to prosperity. Rowan County Commissioners, I ask for your support in placing the Rowan Cabarrus Community College Bond Referendum on the March 3rd, 2020 ballot.
Good evening. My name is Jean Dixon, and I live in the great county of Rowan, in the city of Kannapolis, North Carolina. I'm a proud Rowan County resident, board member, and supporter of the 2020 Rowan Cabarrus Community College Bond Referendum. Many may be surprised to know the widespread impact that Rowan Cabarrus has in our communities. And I'll just say that over the weekend, I drove up 85 and noticed all the dirt that's being turned, I noticed the home goods that's coming, and there's a huge spec building. And so I thought Rowan Cabarrus is really positioned to be able to support any industry that's coming into our county. The college serves over 20,000 students each year and boasts over 650,000 graduates since its doors opened nearly 57 years ago. These graduates are your neighbors, your friends, nurses, firefighters, and more. The college's instructional costs, including salary cost, technology, et cetera, are funded by the state of North Carolina. The counties where the colleges are located are responsible for operating costs and facilities. We literally rely on the county to keep the lights on. It has been 42 years, 42 years, since the county last invested in a new construction classroom building on the college's north campus. We need increased capacity and space to attract more diverse workforce pipeline through our career and technical education pathways. I sincerely thank you in advance for supporting the 2020 Rowan Cabarrus Community College Bond Referendum. We need these facilities to educate, innovate, and elevate our county as we work together to build a better community for life. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Isaac Mail. I live at 430 Peach Orchard Road, Salisbury, 28147, so I'm a local. As stated, I'm Isaac Mail, and I'm an associate in engineering and an associate in science student at Rowan Cabarrus Community College. I will be graduating in May of 2020. I want to talk to you about my experience as a non-traditional college student and why this bond referendum is important to citizens like me. I'm 39 years old, and I chose to attend Rowan Cabarrus, my community's college, despite the stigma that community colleges have nationally. I knew I could get a quality education close to where I live for a lower price than going directly to a four-year university. I'm earning my degrees at Rowan Cabarrus under the guidelines of the North Carolina Comprehensive Articulation Agreement. This agreement ensures the transfer of credits between institutions in the North Carolina Community College System and four-year institutions of the University of North Carolina System. After graduating from Rowan Cabarrus, I plan to attend a four-year university in aerospace engineering or in a dual bachelor's in physics and mechanical engineering. Not only am I getting a quality education at Rowan Cabarrus, but I've had opportunities that give me real-world experience in the chosen field of my study, making me a marketable candidate for employment in higher-wage jobs. This past fall, or last fall, actually, I was a part of NASA's Community College Aerospace Scholars Program, and where I learned from different engineers across the country who are practicing project managers on critical aerospace missions. I did well in the program, and over the summer, I was invited to NASA's Kennedy Space Center for an onsite experience. This onsite experience at Kennedy Space Center gave me greater confidence in my career choices. I am thankful for the education and the support that I've received from everyone here, and I just want to give back, and I'm honored to stand here before you today and join my fellow student leaders in supporting the future needs of Rowan Cabarrus. I'd like to ask the students who came here in support of all of us today to stand up, please. You see, we have a lot of people here. This is our way of not only giving back to an institution that has given us so much, but it's our way of paying it forward. And thank you for your attention and allowing me to tell you how much this college means to me and all of us. We, the students, hope you will vote to place the Rowan Cabarrus Community College Bond Referendum on the upcoming ballot. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Isaac. Thank you, students.
Thank you, Chairman Eds and County Commissioners. My name's Elaine Spalding. I'm president of the Rowan County Chamber of Commerce, and I live in Rowan County. Our Board of Directors today actually passed a resolution in support of the RCCC Bond Referendum. On behalf of our 824 chamber members, we would encourage you to continue to support this. The skilled trades are so important to our business community. I know that each of you understand with the low unemployment rate in our community, we desperately need skilled workers. So I'm really excited to see all these students here, and just want you to know that we really support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Denise Hallett.
Thank you, Chairman Eds. Good evening, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I'm Denise Hallett. I work for Vulcan Materials Company, but I also serve on the Foundation Board for the Rowan Cabarrus Community College, and also serve as vice chair for the EDC Board. And so my comments are going to be really directed on investment and return. As an employee of Vulcan, I can tell you that we have benefited from the welding program that Rowan Cabarrus Community College has offered, and we have hired a couple of students that have graduated from there and really have enjoyed the investment that they're making with us. And companies like mine that don't go anywhere, that are here for the long run, providing the resources for the community, look for individuals like those that come from Rowan Cabarrus Community College in the welding, in the construction, in the industrial maintenance program. And so we look forward to the growing possibilities that Rowan Cabarrus Community College has to offer for companies like ours here in Rowan County. But I also understand it's a numbers game. It's an investment. And so when you make this investment through a bond, you're going to get returns because not only are you going to support the workforce needs of existing companies here, you're going to be attractive to other companies that want to come. Rowan Cabarrus Community College has demonstrated their ability to train a workforce to meet whatever needs that a particular company has, and they can do it quickly and get those folks on the job and on the floor employed. Just to kind of give you a little bit of dollar numbers, just in 2017 and 18, some of the economic numbers that have come out from Rowan Cabarrus Community College, that it has provided $335 million in total income added to the region annually, annually. And 5,875 jobs are supported in the region because of Rowan Cabarrus Community College students. So it really is almost a no-brainer for companies like us to support it. You can see that demonstrated by all those that have come in to support it. We appreciate the opportunity that you are giving to place this on the ballot, and we encourage you to vote for that resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Now, the next name, I can't make out, but I think the last name is Hill. Sorry. Is it Mark?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Did you go to med school? Did you go to med school?
No. I was supposed to be a pharmacist, but that didn't work out. (laughter) So my name is Mark Hill. For my family, Rowan Cabarrus Community College has been a family affair and the source of our success. Personally, it gave me back the confidence I had lost and brought me to the place I am today. I have a good job here in Rowan County, and my family has a bright future. When you think about the students that you want to attend Rowan Cabarrus and then stay and live here and work here and thrive in Rowan County, my family, I think, is a perfect example. My wife was the first to discover Rowan Cabarrus Community College. She'd been out of the workforce while raising our twin boys and went back to school for nursing. She graduated and got a job here in Rowan County, and when opportunity presented itself for me, after having been out of school for such a long time, I thought, well, if she can do it, why can't I? So I enrolled, went back to school at Rowan Cabarrus Community College. I graduated in 2017 in mechanical engineering technology and industrial engineering technology, and I'm now a project manager for Turnkey Technologies, where I use both of these majors daily. I got the job through the college's wonderful internship program, which allows so many students like me to make connections with employers in the community and stay in Rowan County and our workforce here. And at Rowan Cabarrus, no matter where I was or what I was doing, I felt like I was part of a family. I could reach out to anyone, and all they wanted was the best for me and for me to succeed. If I needed help, the staff found a way to help, and I hadn't experienced that elsewhere, and it was inspiring to be in a place where people had my back. And from the time my wife enrolled until now, a member of my family, and when my kids graduate, will have been enrolled for nine years, so it really has been a part of our life. will have been enrolled for nine years, so it really has been a part of our life there. My boys are now attending the Rowan County Early College, and we could not be more pleased with their choice that they have made to navigate with the college there. It's truly been a life-changing place for our family, and I know that this bond may not help me, but it will maybe possibly help my children and definitely their children because we all plan to stay in Rowan County. My wife works here, I work here now, and we love it. I've been a resident of Rowan County for nine years. I've lived in Salisbury for six. I serve on the Salisbury Human Relations Council. I love this community, and I want to succeed in the future, and I think this is a giant leap in taking that step. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Chip, you're next. Do you have anything else? Nope, you're good. Brad Bost.
My name is Brad Bost, and I am a lifetime Rowan County resident. And as a Rowan County resident and a local business owner, I can confidently say that for my business, this bond will be the best investment for the county to make. We struggle constantly to work towards good employment, and I think the college offers the education that will help us succeed to grow our business with employees in the future. On the average, a local home valued at $130,400, the average amount of tax increase for this bond is just over $3 per month, meaning that for around the cost of a case of bottled water per month, residents can invest in the tools and resources for our community that will help us all be more prosperous. For pennies a day, we can ensure that our community will be ready for the growth from the Charlotte region. There's too much at stake for us to miss this opportunity to invest in Rowan County's future. As a longtime advocate for the college, I am proud to advocate for this bond referendum to be on the ballot for Rowan County voters to consider on March 3, 2020. We thank you for your confidence in the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Bost. And then Craig, I'm not sure about the last name.
Well, I will assume that it's me, then. I'm Craig Lamb, and I'm vice president for Corporate and Continuing Education at Rowan Cabarrus, and I'm here to say the two most sought-after words from you tonight, I think, and that is "in conclusion." And so my job here is to summarize somewhat what has come before you so far. We've heard from students and community members and businesses about the opportunity that lies in front of Rowan County to prepare its next generation of workers. You heard about collaboration. You heard about the Rowan County Education Collaborative and how we're working together to create an education community and how this fits in as part of that fully-aligned plan. You hear, you heard tonight about the chamber's support of this, so businesses' support in terms of collaboration. You heard about the school board's support of this. So in terms of, you hear about collaboration and how this is a collaborative effort between the college and all of its constituents, students, businesses, and the community at large. You heard about capacity. You heard about the fact that in order to serve a growing demand from employers, that we need to increase our capacity to serve an increasing group of students. That includes high school students and the incumbent workforce in our businesses today. You heard about pathways to sustainable careers. You heard about the idea of jobs that lead to family sustaining wages, and that's an important piece. We hear data all the time about the fact that, you hear varying numbers, 65% of jobs require some kind of post-secondary education, whatever that number might be. My feeling is that most any job worth having, any job that's sustainable, requires something beyond high school. And so the collaboration and the interplay between the school system and this initiative are very important. We need the high schools to be able to succeed, and we're helping with that with this, with the early college piece and the CTE piece. We need a strong high school system, but our business community needs a strong community college in order to have the workforce that it's looking for. This is also a response to business demand, like I just said, and it's an opportunity for us to create the next generation of the workforce. The words that I thought of while I was listening to our other speakers come before you tonight is the fact that Rowan County's economy was built on our grandfather's economy. It was built on industries and philanthropy and other, the machines of earlier generations and earlier millennia. And what we're talking about here is the ability to build our grandchildren's economy and how we get to the next generation of where we'll be headed and how we can build on top of our grandfather's economy to create the next generation for our grandchildren's economy. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. That's the end of our list. Is there anyone else that maybe got here late that wants to speak? Anyone else? All right, hearing none, we'll close the floor to public comment, and commissioners will entertain comments from the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to give kudos to Grace. I didn't catch her last name, but speaking to the fact that it's been a non-traditional career for women, and I hope that you, we can get you to come and talk to some of our middle schoolers and high school gals and let them know that this is available and it pays. Thanks.
Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, I just made a few comments or made a few notes here as we were going through that struck me about this, that we've built, Rowan County has built no new buildings in there for 42 years, I think, was the last, was the quote that the lady made. And we have one of the largest community college systems in the state. The enrollment typically runs over 5,000 students a semester at Rowan Cabarrus. We need a higher educational level for the population of Rowan County to meet the needs of 21st century jobs. That's what we hear all the time from our constituents. Why don't you bring in companies that are going to pay more than $12 an hour, $15 an hour? We want, we want better-paying jobs. Well, as proved tonight by our speakers, the general consensus is you have to have a qualified workforce to bring in those jobs, and we don't have anybody from the EDC here tonight that I'm aware of. Oh, it's just Rod. I'm sorry. Excuse me, sir. But he will, he will tell you that it's a chicken-and-egg type situation, which comes first, the employment, the employers coming in or the qualified workforce? If we get a qualified workforce, there'll be, there'll be all kinds of new employers coming in here. Also, there's $10 million in this bond for a permanent structure for the early college, and so I understand why the Board of Education is very interested in having this bond passed. But there's just so many things for the community. I am like the gentleman talked about before. I think every member of my family has attended Rowan Cabarrus in some capacity, whether it was with continuing education for our job skills or just attending the college and then transferring out to other schools. So we, you know, we know firsthand in my family how important Rowan Cabarrus is to all of us. So I think this, as far as my vote is concerned, I think this would be one of the most important votes that I've taken in the last six years.
Well, I want to say that, as I've said before, I've been a student at Rowan Cabarrus a few times, a few different things. I've always said that our community colleges are probably very underutilized in our state, very important. If you think about the numbers that I've seen, maybe one and a half trillion dollars of student debt that's out there in the nation today, I think the future generations are going to look at the most economical ways they can get their education. If you look at some of the things that they're trying to do here, I think I shared something on Facebook recently where they're looking at $400,000 shortage in welders in the next four years nationwide. If you take those things, if you take the things that they're going to do for the firefighters and the, to help them to decontaminate after the fires, you know, in Charlotte, they're starting to try to issue multiple turnout gears for that reason. But, you know, we have with our volunteer fire departments, they're not going to be able to have multiple turnout gears for different firemen. So I think that, end of the day, we put it on the ballot. I trust the citizens of the county to make the decision whether or not they want to do this, and so I'm fine with supporting this, putting it on the ballot.
Craig, anything from you?
I'm good.
I did want to speak, I've got a couple of points. Wanted to talk about the Education Collaborative. This term is out there, and so what does this mean? When Rowan Cabarrus came to us last year to talk about the potential of this new technology complex, we saw this as a great opportunity to bring all of the education groups together to talk about, my favorite word and Craig Lamb's favorite word, alignment. And what does alignment mean? Alignment means it's really a handoff from education organization to the next education organization, but really with an eye always on economic development. So I don't know that we've had this discussion before where at the table, you've got the EDC is part of, it's, we all look at the end of the table and say to Rod Kreider and the EDC professionals, is this what we need? Is this what we need? So for the last eight months, we've, every other week, around a board table, been talking with Rowan Salisbury School System, folks from their team, board members from that board, Rowan Cabarrus Community College, their team, folks from their board, and also part of that discussion has been economic development, and their team has been there, but also members from Livingstone College, the president of Livingstone College, and members of his team, along with the president of Catawba College and members of his team, and having this all-inclusive discussion about what does education in Rowan County look like and what does it need to aspire to. And so that is what the collaborative discussion is. And the bottom line for me is, is we've got to raise the ceiling of education in Rowan County. Decades ago, it was okay, I suppose. I don't know if I would endorse it, but it was okay to drop out of high school in the ninth grade and go to work for the company and to live in a company house and to shop in the company store. But we also now hold the dubious record of losing the most jobs in one day of any county in North Carolina. And so when our economy is based on that old manufacturing type of economy, then we are at risk, we are at great risk. North Carolina State University, Craig, what's the name of that organization that came and spoke to us within NC State? It slipped my mind, but...
Institute of Emerging Issues?
No, no, no. The what?
Institute of Emerging Issues.
Institute of Emerging Issues, yes. So they came and spoke to us, and there's something, I can't remember the exact name of it. I'll call it the Jobs Risk Index. And what they did is they looked at every county in North Carolina, and they have, they have an equation that they put together and then determine which counties are at risk during a modernizing economy. And so they take a lot of factors, but in the end, one being the best and 100 being the worst, Rowan County is 65th. Now, it's not good. We're not even average. We're above average. So what that means is as our economy continues to modernize, as we see computers and machines start taking jobs, then because our jobs and workers are under a certain level, then we are very much at risk. And so what our job is, we believe as leaders, is to begin to raise that ceiling of training so that fewer of our people are at risk at automation loss. Does that make sense? Shake your head. Yeah, it does. So this is part of this, and that's why it's not just up to the K-12. They are engaged in their own renewal system right now that is groundbreaking for the whole country. It's not just up to Rowan Cabarrus. It's also, we're also engaging Livingstone and Catawba because we have to have them be part of raising that overall education ceiling. And as the vice chair said, I don't know that it really is a chicken-and-egg because companies won't come here if we don't have the workers to fill their spots. We can have location, we can have water, we can have energy, we can have great folks, and we can have that nice southern draw that people are drawn to, but they won't come here if we don't have. So our kids are demanding opportunity, and if they don't see we have it, then they're leaving us. And so for me, the most important thing is making sure that we can do everything we can do to see that our children have an opportunity here that makes them want to stay. And we're able to do that when we raise the ceiling on education, which attracts better-paying and better jobs. So to me, that's an important thing. The technology facility we're looking at, we've talked about the welding and what's going on there. Appreciate what Commissioner Caskey brought up. 400,000 welding jobs will be in demand in the next four years. We have a real capacity issue. CNC will be in there. No one mentioned this, but we'll build a new automotive facility. In a questionnaire we sent out to our high school students, 600 students mentioned that they are very interested in the automotive industry, but we only have 12 openings currently in our Rowan Cabarrus Community College system. And so that is a real capacity problem, and our dealerships and body shops are screaming for help because their workers are aging out. No offense to any of them, that's just what I'm told. The early college is still meeting in mobile spaces. This will provide a new space for them, plus there's an issue, frankly, between mixing 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders with college-age folks. And so this will give us a way to separate those folks out and then give themselves a sense of place. Plus, there will be extra space there to pursue what one of our goals is, which is trades. And every time I talk about trade schools and trades to the general public, they want that very much, and so that's in high demand. There's 7 million unfilled skilled jobs in the United States right now, and that's a real need. The fire training, we talked about, we have the largest fire training program in the state, and sadly, our brave men and women from fire safety are taking home these contaminants that is contributing to cancer. So, you know, my message is we've just got to raise the ceiling. If we want to stay how we are, then just keep doing what we're doing. If we want to get better, then we've got to do better and be better. And this is not the full answer, but it's a huge first step in us raising the ceiling and changing the culture of education in Rowan County. And I appreciate the work that y'all have done on it, and I certainly hope that we'll pass this tonight. So what I'll do is I'm going to read the bond order, and then I'm going to ask someone to, I don't know who will do it, we haven't arranged it. ask someone to, I don't know who will do it, we haven't arranged this ahead of time, uh, but someone to make this motion. So the resolution adopting bond order and calling for referendum on $45 million general obligation community college bonds, providing for notice of such referendum, form of ballot and publication of bond order is adopted. Now, I've been told that we might get away with just reading that, but we are on a time crunch, and every meeting we have is, uh, important. So to make sure that we get all of the required wording that we have in here, we're going to read, uh, the bond order, uh, resolution. Whereas on December 2nd, 2019, Board of Commissioners of the County of Nor, of Rowan, North Carolina introduced a bond order entitled Bond Order Authorizing the Issuance of General Obligation Bonds of the County of Rowan and the Maximum Aggregate Principal Amount of $45 million for the purpose of financing in part the acquisition, construction, installation, renovation, and equipping of educational facilities of Rowan Cabarrus Community College, and called for a public hearing with respect to the bond order. And whereas the bond order is introduced and notice of such public hearing was published in the Salisbury Post on December 6th, 2019, as required by North Carolina, North Carolina General Statute 159-56 and 57, whereas the board on December 16th held a public hearing with respect to the bond order and now desires to adopt the bond order, whereas North Carolina General Statute 159-58 provides for publication of the bond orders adopted. Now therefore, the Board of, of the County, meeting in regular session on December 6th, 16th, does the following. Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Rowan, North Carolina, the bond order entitled Bond Order Authorizing the Issuance of General Obligation Bonds of the County of Rowan and the Maximum Aggregate Principal Amount of $45 million for the purpose of financing in part the acquisition, construction, installation, renovation, and equipping of educational facilities of Rowan Cabarrus Community College is hereby adopted. The clerk of the county shall cause the bond order with a statement, an appended, uh, a statement appended in form described by North Carolina General Statute 159-58 to be published in the Salisbury Post. The board hereby calls for a referendum with respect to the bond order and fixes the date thereof as March 3rd, 2020. The form of the question on the ballot shall be as follows. Shall the order of the County of Rowan authorizing $45 million general obligation bonds plus interest for the purpose of financing in part the acquisition, construction, installation, renovation, and equipping of educational facilities of Rowan Cabarrus Community College and providing that additional taxes may be levied in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on such bonds be approved, yes or no? The clerk of the county shall deliver a copy of this resolution to the Rowan County Board of Elections no later than December 19th, 2019, and the clerk to the county and bond counsel shall provide for publication of notice of the referendum as required by North Carolina General Statute 159-61C in the Salisbury Post. This resolution shall take effect immediately, adopted on this 16th day of December 2019. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Please move.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, Commissioner Pierce's motion, Commissioner Cluseman's second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations. Now, uh, we have asked them to close the doors, you can't leave, you have to stay for the rest of the meeting. No? Chief's going to go pull the fire alarm, aren't you? Uh, thank you all for being here, we will not be offended if you leave, we're used to being offended, so that's okay. So, uh, we'll, we'll take a couple of a minute, couple minute recess to allow you guys to make your way out. Thank you for being here tonight, Merry Christmas. All right, the, uh, fourth item on our agenda is a presentation from the Finance Department for fiscal year 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Hi, um, I'm going to turn it over to Carrie Dunlap. She, uh, was the auditor that, that came, led the audit for the county this year for Martin Starnes.
Good evening, thank you, Leslie. Thank you, commissioners, um, I'm excited to be here with you guys this afternoon to share the audit financial statements, although...
I'm sure you are.
I really think y'all should have locked the door and made everyone stay so they could hear this, though, I mean...
I tried to give you an audience, and, uh, the fire chief blew it.
You did try, yeah. Okay, well, I, I'll be brief, I know you guys are, um, have had a lot on your plate so far, so, just to start off with, I am with Martin Starnes, I'm an audit manager there, I have done the audit for Rowan County for the past two years, and, um, our audit firm does audit over 20 counties in North Carolina and over 80 governments total, so we do feel like we specialize in governmental audits, and we make sure we implement the latest government standards, and, um, Leslie and the finance team, they draft their own financial statements, so we work with them really closely to make sure we're in compliance, and the report was submitted on time to the LGC this year, and it's already been approved, so that's great, um, ready for the holidays and to get started on the next audit. So, just a few audit highlights, there was an unmodified clean opinion, so there's no reason to think the, um, financial statements were materially misstated, and their very cooperative staff, we appreciate, um, Derek and Leslie, any requests we have, they're very prompt at getting us what we need, and we have requests throughout the entire year. We're actually on-site twice a year, and, um, but that is not at all the only time we communicate with them, it's a year-round process, so we're very appreciative of them getting us everything we asked them for. So the general fund summary, uh, you can see your revenues and expenditures compared to last year, the revenues increased by about 2.7 million or 1.9%. This was mainly due to an increase in your ad valorem taxes and your local option sales tax. Expenditures also increased by 2.5 million or about 1.8%, so this was mainly due to an increase in public safety and education. The next couple of slides, I'll talk about your fund balance, so just an overview of fund balance, that equals your assets and deferred outflows minus your liabilities and deferred inflows, and there are five different classifications, um, non-spendables such as inventory, restricted, which are external restrictions by law, committed is the internal constraint at the board level, which you guys are required to undo, assigned are any internal constraints, and unassigned is the only thing that doesn't have any sort of constraints. So your total fund balance this year was about 51.8 million. As you can see, this increase was smaller than 17 to 18, it was about 16.5 mil, or 16.5,000. $380 of that was an increase in inventory, so the net change in fund balance before your inventory was 16,000, roughly 16,000. Um, last year, you can see that number was closer to 335,000, and inventory actually decreased last year, so there was a larger change in, net change in fund balance in 17, 18. Fund balance, your available fund balance is your total fund balance less your non-spendable and your stabilization by state statute. This is the calculation that's used by the LGC to compare you to other units, and so your calculation for available fund balance is that total fund balance number, your non-spendable is 2.8 million, stabilization by state statutes 13.6, so your available fund balance is 35.0, almost 3 million, and this did decrease from last year, last year it was 35.6, so that was about a $275,000 decrease this year. And then this slide further shows that unassigned fund balance number, so you take your available, then you also back out any restricted, committed, and assigned amounts, so your unassigned fund balance that is not accounted for in any way is 16 million, and that number last year was 18, a little over 18 million. So that was a substantial decrease this year, however, you do have an unassigned fund balance of 16 million, which is a healthy as far as the LGC would say, but that is just something to notice, that you want to make sure that doesn't continue from year to year for that decrease in unassigned to continue in that manner. The next couple of slides, I'm going to talk about your top revenues and expenditures, so the top three are property taxes at 57%, sales tax at 18%, and restricted intergovernmental at 14. The other revenues make up 11%, and that includes your other taxes, unrestricted intergovernmental, permits and fees, sales and services, and investments, and, as well as some other miscellaneous revenues. So your top revenue is your property taxes, and that was 82.5 million this year, and that increased about 833,000 or 1%. The second top revenue is your local option sales tax, and that was your biggest increase, and that was 2.1 million or about 8.6%. And then, last but not least, your restricted intergovernmental, that's, um, close to 19.5 million, that did decrease this year, about 1.3 million or 6.4%.
What, what is that?
Your restricted intergovernmental includes, um, like your social services revenues, um...
We knew that was going down.
Mm-hmm, so that, that's the biggest bulk of that, and there are other, I can't think off the top of my head, but, um, I can look into that closer if you, but that's the biggest driver behind.
Yeah, the, um, we had a, nearly a million dollar decrease due to, uh, childcare, daycare, basically. Um, the state took over that program, and so it, we were, received funds back dollar for dollar, and, uh, that was almost a million dollars. And then crisis intervention funds last year decreased about 210,000, and, uh, that has a lot to do with the weather. That's, that's helping pay energy costs, that type of thing.
I think there was a milder winter last year, and that...
Events happen, we get extra funds that flow in, you have a good weather year, and we don't get as much.
Correct.
And more about that childcare, the 20.8 last year, I believe you guys, Rowan had three months that was not in NC FAST yet, so there was three months of that that was reflected in the 2018 numbers, whereas the entire year this year was not reflected, so that was the other part of that million dollar increase, the decrease she was referring to. So the next slides are about your expenditures, and so your top is education at 32%, public safety at 22%, and human services at 18%. And the other expenditures include your general government, transportation, economic and physical development, culture and recreation, and debt service. Education went up about 1.7 million or 3.9%, so it's 45.8 million, and that will continue to go up if the bond referendum, everything goes well, so that is a good thing. The public safety, that increased 1.3 million or 4.2%, it's almost 31 million. And then your human services, which is, also includes all of your social services revenue and, um, expenditures, so that increased very small, about 19,000 or .1%. And then, I also have a slide to show you your debt service, it's about 15.3 million, and that decreased 387,000 or 2.5% this year. And that is all for your general fund revenue and expenditures. Here are, I have two brief slides about your enterprise funds, just showing how they compared over last year. For the landfill, you can see that the unrestricted net position increased to 7, almost .2 million this year. The cash flow from operations was about the same, 2.1 million, and then your net income for gap increased to 1.6 million for the landfill. And then for the airport, the...
What, what's the unrestricted net position? But is, is that just bottom line?
Mm-hmm.
So how did that increase, you know, by 2.2 million dollars? I mean, I see that...
The landfill makes money, makes a bunch.
Yeah, how did that go up that much?
Um, the, uh, landfill fees, that increased about half a million, and that was the largest area of an increase. Um, the, uh, interest income was up about 50,000. Um, health insurance expense decreased by about 300,000 from the year before, um, and that's related to the OPEB adjustment, which is the retiree health insurance. Um, those were the major factors.
Leslie, does any of that differential in cost, is it reflected because we did open that new sale and it was paid for, that the landfill? You know, we had an extreme amount of cost, once we started opening up, that was stuff that we had to do to encapsulate the other, so I'm sure that was pulled down out of this landfill fund, and since we didn't have that this year, would that make up part of that difference?
Um, so, the expenditures, although you budget them when you, so we adopt a budget and we, and we budget those expenditures, that's actually capitalized, so, um, just the expenses themselves don't make a difference, the, the depreciation expense can make a difference, um, but it is up and running, and it's great that we don't, that we are pay-as-you-go basically in the landfill fund. I mean, that, as we need a new sale or as we need gas monitoring, we have the funds available, um, to pay for that without incurring debt.
I, I just remembered that we ran into a soil issue out there when we were opening up the new sale, where they had to actually dynamite to, to move some of the land, and I know that was not in our original budget.
That's true.
So I was saying, part of those costs came out of this enterprise fund, which we don't have to do again.
Right, right. Yes, sir.
And then the other slide is the airport fund, and so your unrestricted net position decreased slightly this year to 1.6, but the cash flow from operations actually increased to, it's still a deficit of 98,000, and then the net income was a substantial increase to 1. almost 8 million, and there was a $2 million capital contribution in the airport fund this year that accounted for the majority of those changes, so...
Is that to build a, build a hangar?
No, that was actually the runway overlay.
Oh, but that goes back, that goes back out. So, cash flows about $98,000 in red.
Yes, sir.
That doesn't include, though, all the property taxes?
Correct, the property taxes off airplane valuations are in the general fund.
Expense plus fuel sales, plus-plus, minus-minus, but doesn't include the value of the tax revenue generated?
That's correct, it does not.
Because the way this looks, I mean, it looks, it's kind of like, we're losing money?
Looks like you're losing money on the airport, yeah.
I thought we were making money.
Well, we also had, you know, we added on the new, uh, conference room, too, that would be included in this, too, so I'm good with that.
It's hard to, you know, it's hard to say that you're losing money when you don't count the tax income from coming out there, so it's, it is what it is.
That's all I have for you. Any other discussion and questions?
Yeah, I, uh, I was looking at the financial report in here, and I saw that our investment income on the general fund was up a million dollars this year. Who, who makes decisions about those investments?
I, the, I do, uh, along with Lisa Beavis, she's an accountant, too, in the finance department. We work on investments together. Now, I will say, um, when we invest, uh, investments are restricted by the general statutes, and, um, when we invest in commercial paper or agencies or treasuries, we hold that investment until maturity, um, so the, the numbers for interest revenue are inflated at 630, 2019, um, because we did a journal entry, which is GAAP, to bring it to market. So, you know, the cost we had in our book per the market was quite a bit lower, hundreds of thousands of dollars lower, and, uh, so that increases interest revenue. But when you turn around and you come into this year, you have to reverse that market-to-market. Now, there might be one at the end of this year, but if the economy went down, that's where it can, you can have this major swing, I mean, we could have a million dollar swing in the opposite direction. And, uh, I had a lot of discussions, uh, with Carrie and also Erica Brown, who is the partner at Martin Starnes for us, because I actually didn't want to book that. And it's, I mean, it's great in a year like this, but it can actually, in some of the smaller funds, we won't have it in the general fund, but in smaller funds, at the end of the year, we could show negative interest income, and that, that's happened before, and, um, it's, but it is generally accepted accounting principles, and I couldn't talk them into anything else.
And we have seen that across the board this year, there's been interest income, very large numbers increases this year across all of our governments, but like Leslie said, that could be a different, completely different swing next year, it's just whether or not that money's actually there at that point in time to spend, it is, however, depending on when you have to hold it to maturity because of the regulations with government investments, that can go either way, so...
But I, but I do think, um, as of 630, 2019, you, you should give me like a, a thumbs up.
Are you on any type of commission? Are you on any type of commission?
No, I'm not on a commission.
County commission.
Oh, the county commission, ah.
All right, anything we need to know about as commissioners is all from your perspective? Is everything running smoothly?
The biggest thing is, for you guys, is once we do start our planning again for next year, is those audit inquiries that we send out. Any responses you can provide back to that of anything that's going on, any concerns you have, that's very helpful for us with our audit and our planning and risk assessment. So, that's the biggest thing that you guys can do to help with the audit, and I can't think of anything else other than, you know, we're working with, we'll be working with Leslie next year. The biggest thing coming is the lease standard, and so I don't know exactly how much it's gonna affect the county, but that's the biggest GASB standard that's coming out that could be significant changes for next year, so.
Lease standard? What are you talking about?
So, there are capital leases and operating leases, and operating leases are treated differently, but with this new accounting standard, they're gonna be treated like capital leases. So, there's a lot of accounting technical stuff that has to be ran through the financials now with any operating leases that the county may have. So, we're still waiting on final resolutions and everything from the Standards Board to, before we start implementing that, but it's in the works and should be effective for next year unless they have another extension, but that's something we're working really closely with on.
Could you give us an example of an operating lease?
Copiers, if you, I don't, I don't know if you have any that are more specific to the county, but copiers. That's just something very simple, but it's gonna be very complex now to, and there might be a materiality threshold we can work with, but that's, a lot of that stuff is still in the works, so.
The, one thing that I'll say that to keep in mind for next year, it didn't happen in 2019, and I had said that it might, and that is the High Street Bridge project with the city of Kannapolis. Their note did not come off our books because that is to come off our books. The way the inter-local agreement is currently written, that will be removed from our books when the development is complete. And so, I don't know when that is, but that'll be about a $3 million hit to fund balance in the general fund when that does. That note receivable is, I guess, 2.8 million.
Are you happy with our management?
Yes.
Okay. Anything you need to talk to us about afterwards?
Yeah.
No? Okay.
All good things to say, so.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
All right, item number five, Mr. Bringle. Mr. Bringle is Director of Facilities Management on Parks and Rec, now a new member of China Grove City Council. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, I bring my team with me tonight. I've got Natalie Morgan of Morgan Architectural, and of course Craig Farmer, our supervisor, out at Ellis Park. I'd like to just preface in the beginning that I'd like to thank the commissioners for the funding that y'all have provided at Ellis Park over the last three to four years in making that park a unique community park that the citizens of the county and even of some of the municipalities that do use. And it wouldn't have happened without y'all's foresight and support in being able to do that. One of the items that you have in front of you tonight, of course, is, it was brought to our attention about kitchen renovation at Ellis Park. I think most of you know, again, that being a community park, almost every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, literally 52 weekends out of the year, that park is utilized in the, in that area as far as the kitchen, the party room, by multiple different groups, sometimes two different groups in one day. They can rent it a half a day or all day. Plus, also, we have our therapeutic recreation group that operates out of there, and they utilize the kitchen with teaching skills for our therapeutic group as well. But anyway, we had in the budget this year $65,000 to do kitchen renovation. We hired Natalie Morgan of Morgan Architects. She came up with a plan. We bid the plan, we bid the project out, and we only had one contractor that bid, so we, with the time crunch, we had to re-advertise it for 10 days. We bid it out again, and we had two contractors that supplied bids for us. And with that being said, we are on a very short time schedule because back in August, we marked out January and February to have this work completed, which we think is an easy target for us, but come March, the first weekend in March, the facility is rented out. So, you know, time is of the essence from the standpoint of getting contracts signed, getting it moved through financial and other department areas with a signature by the county manager. January 1st is only two and a half weeks away, and so I've already spoke to Natalie about getting this contract signed by AGS Contracting. If approved tonight, the AIA contract will form, and everybody's gonna have to really step up in helping us to be able to get this timeframe done because come March, we've got people in there. But anyhow, what I'd like, what we're bringing to you tonight is the, getting us to approve AGIS Contracting LLC for the project. The base bid was at $85,000, and we're asking for bid alternate one and bid alternate two. Bid alternate one is basically the flooring that we need to do both in the kitchen area as well as into the party room itself. The other, the bid alternate number two, is the stainless steel countertops. The longevity of that, we would like to see that being able to be done. But when we did this, we had a shortfall of $35,471. That being said, we looked at what were the triggering points that caused us to go over budget. One was, we really didn't have an architectural number given to us. You know, when we started the bid process, we had a number that we thought would work, but it did not. The appliances, for commercial appliances, around $12,500. That's purchased. That's not installed or delivered. The electrical, we all know that that's an old-school building, and we had a 200-amp service that's been added to for probably 50 years, and we had the electrical engineer out to look at it. Very quickly, he saw that we had over-capacitated that 200-amp service, so we are having to have an additional 200-amp service tied into that, plus a lot of rewiring that has to be done, and that was an additional cost of about $10,000. So, those two right there are around $22,000 to $23,000. If we take that away, then we're getting back to where really the original number was that we have. But what we bring to you tonight, of course, is asking you to accept the AGS Contracting for the amount of $100,471 so that we can move forward on that, and of course, there are architectural fees that would be added to that as well. Any questions?
Talk to me about the bid alternate for the flooring. I asked that we get some specifications on that, and that I wanted the flooring specifications to equal what we put in out at the West End Plaza, because that product has a good, long life. We won't ever have to put another floor in. Is this bid that you have, is it for that flooring?
Yes, sir. The product that I have specified right now is a Shaw product that has a nice warranty and longevity, and it's a luxury vinyl tile. It's a waterproof product that'll hold up and withstand the movement of the tables, but also be a great product to go down on an existing floor that has a lot of character to it, per se. But there's also, that's taken into account that they're, they're very aware, the floor's been walked, there are some areas at play, so some of that's accounted for in the bids. We did call that out, so.
What is the mill thickness on that flooring?
I do not have that directly in front of me, but I will give it to you. I believe our LVTs vary between .2 to .4.
No, I'm talking about the wear layers on it. Is it a 12-mil or 20-mil product?
20-mil.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
And Natalie, are you, I mean, is this fall within what you see as a fair price for the project that we have going?
Yes, sir. I do think that this is a fair price. To be honest, it's easy for a residential kitchen without commercial appliances to be a $100,000 project. I've experienced both residential and commercial, so I do expect that, and with the age of the building, knowing that we're, what we're doing with the electrical, I do think that, and then also with the, kind of the amount of bidders that we had available to us in such a busy environment, I was happy to see the bids come back close to each other. So, it tells us we have a good set to work off of. We didn't have a lot of variance, so those are the reasons I think it is a fair number.
Mr. Farmer, I understand you have a great son-in-law. For the record, could you please confirm that?
Yeah, he's a pretty good kid.
Okay, for the record.
Yeah, for the record, yeah. Thanks, David.
Let me ask him a question. Craig, with completing this kitchen and dining room remodeled, that should take care of everything you've got need for on the interior of the park facilities, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So, this would be the end of it, everything else would be?
End of everything on the interior of the building, yes, sir. Thank you.
Folks, I think we need to look at this and understand, and just point out that this is a problem that the schools have. We're keeping up a bunch of old-school buildings, and every time they go to do something like this, they've got electrical problems, they got this doesn't fit, that doesn't fit, and it's just really difficult to maintain old buildings. These folks have done as good a job as you can do to go in and do this, but it's just expensive to bring some buildings into 21st century code, and this is symptomatic of what's happening when you try to maintain old buildings.
Or so you, are you advocating building a new Ellis Park building out there? Not at this point.
That was gonna be my question to you, Commissioner Green.
The auditor is probably still in the building, so I don't want her to hear that.
Order. Call the question. All right, well, that's good. Any other questions for our friends? All right, well, thank you for your time, and Commissioner Pierce, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the, what was the name of the contractor? Don?
AGS.
Yes, bid alternate ones and two. Make that form a motion.
All right, motion. We have a second. Jim, second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and Leslie, Aaron, we'll get you an AIA contract before a week's out so we can get that in process, and-
Was the motion to accept all the alternates?
First and second?
One and two.
One and two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The base bid?
Base bid plus alternate one and two. We're excluding alternate three.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Ladies, all right, next item, budget amendments. Had time to go through those. Motion to approve budget amendments?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I'd now make a motion. We enter closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143318.11A1 to consider approval of the closed session minutes for September 3rd, September 16th, October 21st, October 25th, and November 4th, 2019, and 14331811A3 for attorney-client privilege, communication regarding a personnel matter. And as soon as we clear the room, we'll get started. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.